Evening. All council members are present and accounted for, and one looks relieved that I'm back.
I just started to panic and then it was like, whoo.
I'm sure you were doing just fine. Everything went great. We're going to ask one of our scouts to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Who should we ask? Do you have someone back there that would like to volunteer?
We absolutely do.
Why don't you name them off for me?
We'll have our troop leader do it. Katie, please.
What's your name?
Hayden.
Hayden? Hayden, what's your last name, Hayden?
Brown.
Brown? Okay. And then, how about...everybody looks the other way when I look for someone with...Marty! How about Marty?
I would love to.
Thank you.
We'll volunteer Marty.
Alright. Go ahead. Hayden, come on up and lead us in a pledge, and then Marty will offer the opening remarks.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No.
None? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for approval of the agenda.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Okay, Eric, that was pretty loud. Hey, Eric, it's Sid. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Agenda is approved. It's now time for an open session. This is where if there's something on the agenda that is not a public hearing or open for public comment, if you'd like to get up and address the council, or if there's something not on the agenda that you'd like to discuss, please feel free to come up and state your name and address. Kathy will manage that clock up there. She'll give you about three minutes, and so we ask you, when somebody calls time, please be considerate. So go ahead at this time, if anybody would like to address the council. I'll address one. You know, I've done a little bit of traveling in the last couple of weeks, and I'm headed out again, and I have to say, some of the places that I've been, I am really glad to be back in Pleasant Grove. There's just...there's just no place like home. When you drive back here into the state and then you drive into Pleasant Grove, you look around, you see the people, you see what's familiar to you, you compare it to what you've just been through, and the safety scares that you've had while you've been traveling. I love it here. This is a great place, so I'm grateful to be living in Pleasant Grove. Anyone else?
Molly Andrew, 1125 Sage Drive. Some of you may...I don't see very often here, but we are addressing the Public Safety Building issue in Pleasant Grove, and we're meeting tomorrow night at seven o'clock in this room. And if you have any interest or want to know what's going on, we just want the public to come, so that it's not new when it's presented to you.
Thanks, Molly. And tomorrow night will be actually a very special meeting for the Public Safety Committee, as well as the council. The council's invited to be there. We have some good information that we want to share, unique to what we've done in the past, so it's going to be a good night. Encourage everyone to be there, and if you can't, go ahead and watch it online. Alright, anyone else? Seeing none? Oh, sir? Please, right up here. Step up here, and someone will explain that to you. Usually, I'm sitting here, so I don't know how.
Scott?
Well, or actually, Scott, to make it a little bit easier, because sometimes it's hard to search on there, go to pleasantgrove.org. On the right-hand side of the page, there's four tabs, and one is the live streaming tab. Just click on that, it'll take you right to the YouTube page, because sometimes when you search YouTube, it will come up with multiple, but it's always on the homepage of our website.
Thank you.
Pleasantgrove.org. Mm-hmm.
Okay, anyone else? Alright, we'll go ahead and close the open session. We have a number of items on the consent agenda. Are there any question or discussion? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion on the consent items.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Eric and a second by Sid. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. So I have down here Board Commission Committee appointments to consider the approval of the appointment of Marty Beaumont as city engineer. We have a unique situation in our city. Our city engineer left us a little while ago, and we did...we did start interviewing and bringing in applicants for a different level of engineer, and while we were looking at saving money and consolidating responsibilities, we realized that we have this resource here who has been working in the engineering field for decades, both management-wise and hands-on, and so we turned to him and asked if he wouldn't mind stepping in and taking that responsibility. Doesn't mean he'll be doing all the, you know, drawing and things himself, but he...those that do perform that will work under his stamp, and he will go ahead and oversee and approve that, so we appreciate that. And I think this is an appointment by council, and so we...and then, do we...okay, and then, do we go ahead and...we don't swear him in? Okay. So unless there's any discussion as a council, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we appoint Marty Beaumont as city engineer.
Okay, I'm drawing blanks.
Ben and Diana.
Thank you. Ben and Diana. You see how I love coming home to Pleasant Grove? Alright, we have a motion by Ben and Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Marty, thank you. Hats. We have no presentations tonight. We have no public hearings. We have quite a bit of business, items that are ready for vote. Item A is to consider for approval a proclamation declaring April 30th as Arbor Day, and Deion will do the presentation. You're going to give a little background on how long we've been doing this?
Sure. I forgot the little plaque, but we got a really nice plaque this year. Last year, we completed our 20th year in a row for Tree City USA. There's quite a criteria that comes along with that. One of the processes that we're doing now, the proclamation for Arbor Day and holding the Arbor Day celebration, is one of those requirements. This year, we'd like to hold at Hill Park, which is just off of about 350 South, 1500 East. We'll hold that Saturday, the 30th, at eight o'clock in the morning. Have a short presentation, then plant about three or four trees, and go from there, so...and like I say, this is the proclamation that gets part of those requirements fulfilled.
Okay, so as a proclamation, then, we need to actually read that. Tina, do we have a proclamation that we should...thank you. I'm probably just looking at something stuck in between. There we go. Okay, "Whereas Arbor Day is observed throughout the nation, whereas trees provide beauty to the community, and whereas trees provide valuable shade from the hot summer sun, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil and produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are valuable in purifying the air in Utah's arid climate, and whereas having beautiful trees planted in the community is an important matter to the citizens, and whereas the city was named Pleasant Grove because of a beautiful grove of trees and reflects the appreciation of our forefathers had for them, and whereas Pleasant Grove, as Utah City of Trees, continues to be characterized by the scenic landscape that trees provide. Now therefore, I, Michael W. Daniels, Mayor of Pleasant Grove City, on behalf of the city council, to hereby proclaim the citizens to this...that the citizens of Pleasant Grove observe April 30th, 2016 as Arbor Day by joining the Beautification Commission at the Hill Park, 350 South, 1500 East, at 8:00 a.m. for a tree planting ceremony, and further urge everyone to plant a tree." I'll entertain a motion for approval by the council.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve a proclamation declaring April 30th as Arbor Day in Pleasant Grove.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Ben, a second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. What's that? Thank you. Alright, next is to consider adopting a Resolution 2016-015 authorizing the Pleasant Grove City Parks and Recreation Department to submit application for the 2016 Utah County Commission Municipal Recreation Grant for improvements to be made to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail and multi-use trail system, and providing for an effective date.
Yes, so we're applying for the...I call it the rec grant from the county. This is a grant that's funded by tourism and recreation fees, as visitors come into the county and ski and use our hotels, those types of things. This is our portion. Our portion is just a little over 20,000. That's what we're submitting for this year. It's due, I believe, May 2nd, so I'd like to get it down there next week and get things taken care of that way. We're going to start the progress and construction of the trail system, and this will fund some of the gates, some of the signage and other items like that.
Okay, any questions for Deion? Now I'll entertain a motion.
We need to motion that we adopt Resolution 2016-015 authorizing Pleasant Grove City Parks and Recreation Department Director to submit application for the 2016 Utah County Commission Municipal Recreation Grant for improvements to be made to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail and multi-use trail system, and providing for an effective date.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sid, and a second by Eric, by voice. Lynn?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Diana?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, item 10C is to consider for approval of a six-lot subdivision called Roundy Auto Platte A, consisting of approximately 2.39 acres on property located at approximately 560 South Locust Ave. in the R18 Single Family Residential Zone. Ken?
Okay, this six-lot final plat has come before the planning commission recently with their approval of the final plat, and that was also after the approval of one of the lots receiving a lot width variance, and I'll point out where that occurred. But this is the location on Locust Avenue, across the street from the recreation center. So it's two very deep lots that are being divided into six. They will have their access off of the road right here, and creating a cul-de-sac with four lots here, and two of them onto Locust Avenue. So the lot number three meets the minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, just barely, but it also received a lot width variance right here for lesser than the required 85 feet of front, or lot width. So, but otherwise, all the lots do meet or exceed the minimum requirements for lots in the R18 subdivision, or excuse me, zone, and it's ready to go for final plat. We recommend approval.
Okay, discussion?
Existing homes on three and four?
On three and four, yes.
Name plats, Ken. Who comes up with the names?
The developer or property owner who's the applicant can choose the name, as long as it doesn't conflict with an existing plat name in the county. So there are two properties here, one owned or previous...or up to this point, one owned by the Roundys and one owned by the Autos.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Will these fall into Apple Grove P U D?
No, it's a separate development.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion that we approve six-lot subdivision called Roundy Auto Platte A, consisting of approximately 2.39 acres on property located approximately 560 South Locust Avenue in the R18 Single Family Residential Zone.
Second. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben, a second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Ken, I like the way that the interior lot is being developed with a cul-de-sac, as opposed to a flag lot. That's really creative. Yeah. Okay, our next item is 10D, to consider awarding Cody Ecker Construction the partial bid for the 1150 West, 2600 North Detention Partial Project. Marty, are you...
Yes.
Do you want to come up here so we can hear you in the microphone? Thank you.
Quite alright. Yeah, didn't work.
Mayor, council, this is the first...
That's so much better.
First part...
Thank you.
You're very welcome. This is the first part of a larger project that is in the works, and if I could...Dr. Let me do that real quick. So this is part of a bigger project that we are planning to do. When we own a piece of property up here on 2600 North, and that property...should come up, just one second. So the city currently owns this...this piece of property on 2600 North. The boundaries extend right down there, and the Petersons currently own this home here. Their property boundary comes to this location. We currently have an easement on this portion of the property. They have...they want to move forward on finishing off their property, the landscaping in the backyard. They've asked us if, when we're going to complete this project. We are not ready to move forward yet on the remainder of the detention basin, but we are wanting to get these improvements in, which are a couple of outlet structures, and some boxes there, some film material, so that we can get rid of, again, any impact to the Petersons, so they can move forward on the backyard improvements that they would like to install. So we decided to split this project up and do this smaller partial project, and so we bid this out. We have bids, and we received five bids, and the low bidder for this was Cody Ecker Construction, who is currently doing our Center Street waterline project. We've been very impressed. They've done a good job for us this time, and so we recommend approval of that.
Was there recently, like, a fire or something in that area?
A fire?
Yes. No? Is it further to the west?
Oh, you know what? That might be on the Petersons' property, which is right back over here, beyond that.
Any...any questions for staff? Alright, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to consider...to awarding Cody Ecker Construction a partial bid for the 1150 West, 2600 North Detention Partial Project.
Okay, we have a motion by Eric, and a second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item 10E is to consider for adoption an ordinance 2016-7, amending the Pleasant Grove City Municipal Code, Garbage and Refuge, by removing the $50 opt-out fee for curbside recycling services, and providing for an effective date.
We talked about this briefly last week, and I know, Mayor, you weren't here, so briefly, when the city implemented our recycle program in 2010, we had what was considered an opt-out program, meaning that every resident was automatically enrolled into the program, and then if they did not want to be a part of the recycle, they had to opt out. They had to come into City Hall, fill out a piece of paper, and say, "I don't want recycle services." When we were in the negotiation process with Republic Services in order to provide the service, we had to guarantee a certain number of residents that were going to take the recycle in order to get a certain price. So we went through the program, and we had people that were able to opt out for free if they chose, but they had to do it by a certain date, which was a date sometime in February of 2010. After that date in February, if people opted out, then we charged them $50, because we needed to have a solid number for Republic Services in order to maintain that price level that they wanted to give us. Over the course of the last six years, our recycle program has grown by a couple hundred. I think we get a couple hundred new recycle users every year, and so we've met our threshold, and we don't anticipate we'll ever go below this threshold that Republic Services needs in order to give us the particular price. We had a resident call up the other day that wanted to opt out, and as I was explaining to them why we had the $50 opt-out fee, it kind of made...it dawned on me that we probably don't really need this fee anymore, because our levels are where we need them to be, and I don't think we're in danger of dropping below that. So we're recommending to the city council that we take this fee away. It is part...it is ordinance when we adopted the recycle program, and this part of it was put into ordinance, and so in order to take that fee away, we have to amend the ordinance.
So this is just an amendment?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and so if anybody...if there's any resident now at this point that wants to opt out of the recycle, they just need to give us a call. We will opt them out. They will...will come and pick up the recycle bin, and there will be no charge.
Any questions from the council?
Nope.
Pardon me?
We kind of talked about this last week.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Alright, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we, as a council, adopt the ordinance 2016-7, amending the Pleasant Grove City Municipal Code on Garbage and Refuge, by removing a $50 opt-out fee for curbside recycling services, and providing for an effective date.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben, and a forty-second second by Eric, by voice. Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Okay. And thank you to the residents of Pleasant Grove who do participate. The world has changed.
We save about $40,000 at the scale.
I've noticed that my...not me, my wife, has really reduced the amount of garbage that we've thrown away in the past. We used to have two humongous dumpsters, and then the guy had to wait, you know, while we reloaded. One, maybe half of one now, so it's...it's pretty good. Okay. Alright, items for discussion, we're in section 11. 11A is discussion and direction on parks and recreation fees.
Mayor and council, as part of the budget process, we've been looking at our fees. If you remember right, a couple weeks ago, we went over the cemetery fees. This week, we'd like to talk about the recreation and swimming pool fees. So the first thing I'd like to go over is our fee schedule for the recreation center itself, the passes, individual passes, annual passes, all those types of passes, which also includes the swimming pool.
Do we have any overheads for the public to view? Thank you.
If I can't answer them, Clint's here to help me, so... Memberships. Sorry, my sheet's a little bit different, but... So basically, on our daily fees, this is...this is users that come in and pay per day to utilize the recreation center. We're increasing those fees by 25 cents. And if you look at...on the far right-hand side, it will show the anticipated gain that we'll have from this.
That light?
Thank you.
And if you notice, when we started, when we opened the recreation center, we charged a resident non-resident fee for this, and it became too problematic trying to figure out where everybody's funds from. So we did away with the daily admission fee on, as far as a resident and non-resident. Everything else has a resident non-resident fee. The annual passes, and the majority of the passes went up about $5 through...throughout the chart here. And again, at the bottom of that, you can see the anticipated gain in revenue, and those are off of the numbers that we currently have for last year. Just plugging those numbers in. Any questions on the rec center? We'll go to the pool.
So which number are we looking at as the potential increase?
So it would be the third line over, or third column, sorry, the proposed fee.
Right, I'm...I meant in summary.
Okay, so underneath the daily admissions, there's a one line there. It says 7,910. I don't...hey, right here. I'm shaking, so I'm going to hold this. Right there. The other one is down on the sheet, if you could scroll down just a little bit. So there's our anticipated revenue with the other passes for the recreation center.
So a total of 27,000? Am I reading that right?
Yes, for both of those, yeah.
Annual increase in fees.
Correct.
Okay.
This is in pass sales, and...so if you...the next column down is the comp...
Can you go over...
Yeah, so we...we looked at the other rec centers in the county. This is kind of challenging for us, because we do not have an indoor pool, and all the other...well, I shouldn't say all the other. The majority of the other rec centers have an indoor pool associated with their recreation center, and so they...and again, it will come down into swimming fees also, but it's...when we did this study a couple years ago, it was very hard to compare us and get those numbers for prices and passes and things in line, because we don't offer the indoor pool, which is a year-round facility, and so the comparison goes off somewhat of their...of their rate increases that they've done in the past, and...but again, it's really hard to compare us with them, because we do not have that component. And, um, but again, it's, it's really hard to compare us with them because we do not have that component. So if you look at, um, our combination passes with the pool and the, and the rec center, citizens can come in and purchase those in a combination pass. We, we did not increase those this year, no changes to those. Then the swimming pool, um, again, we went up about five dollars for the family pass. We compared this one a little bit to Linden because they have the outdoor pool, but you can see there that, on the very, we anticipate about eleven thousand, twelve thousand dollars, uh, projected revenue with our numbers from last year. And between the two of them, it's about thirty-nine thousand. And on, I believe in the packet, there's additional information spreadsheets that explain this a little bit better as far as the comparisons with the other centers and pools.
You know, we've had a lot of questions that we've discussed over the years about a self-sustaining, um, recreation facility, rec center facility versus a subsidized one. Do you know now, or maybe, um, Denise, do you know now, like, about where we are on an annual basis in terms of the general fund, uh, either subsidizing or not subsidizing the, the recreation center itself?
I know Denise has those numbers. We've looked at them. I just don't have them off the top of my head.
That's nice. So this, I, I just got a bug in my ear here, so this is gonna reduce the amount of the subsidy?
Correct.
By quite a bit, actually, like?
About forty thousand.
Yeah. Well, I mean, percentage-wise, like, forty, fifty percent?
It won't be, it won't be this year. Yes, it would be next year.
When you say next, you mean July two thousand eighteen, seventeen, sorry? Fiscal year eighteen. Okay, okay. But we're making progress on the, on a break even for those two fis, for those two functions. That's great. Okay?
I don't know who's throwing the, do you want, do you want to cover any more on this, on the recreation fees?
I've got one quick question, Dion, while we're here. I'm looking at the table in the packets, and I'm noticing that the one fee that went down that I saw was a cooking class for non-residents.
I don't think we're to that one yet.
Oh, okay.
That's, we can go to that one now. So the other one is the program fees. I think, I can't remember what it's titled on your guys'...
And was this also compared against the other cities?
Yeah. So as we looked at our program fees, um, there were a couple areas that, that we needed some tweaking. Enrichment was one of those. That would be those cooking classes. But as we looked at most of the, uh, the sport programs, there was some fees associated through the organizations, um, that are coming in line too, and so that's part of the increase is for, um, us to be recouping these fees and passing them along to the user. So, um, most of them just went up a couple dollars. There's not a lot. There's a lot of program, well, I shouldn't say that. In the enrichment things, we changed a lot of the ways that we were structuring the program, where we had a monthly fee. We've gone away from that to a six-month fee because we weren't able to, we were buying a lot of supplies, and then we wouldn't have the participation that we anticipated. So now we're gonna just go changing the program structure and just do a six-month type program. When we met, I think this was, there was a few programs we talked about, and this, this takes care of that, right? Yes, this will take care of the enrichment programs.
So on the program side, are tho, are those programs pretty much break even?
All programs with the exception of a few that we've done historically, like the family day hike, um, movie night, the Halloween fest, a few things like that, all the programs break even with the exception of the enrichment ones that we've taken care of that problem this year.
Well, not just break even, but they're profitable.
Yes. Yeah, they bring in revenue.
More, more than that particular class cost.
Right.
Right. But when you, our definitions of break even might be a little different. Because I, I kind of look at all costs, not just, not just the labor for that class and the materials, but like, you know, it takes space and administration. There's a whole bunch of other things that are thrown in there, and I, uh, just wanna see where we are.
Well, I believe last year we started including, or when we did the analysis this year, the staff time that it takes as well, and that's included with the cost. Is that right?
Right, yeah. This will, so the programs, the way we operate them is if they do, if they don't support themselves, then generally we deal away with them.
But, but before, we weren't including the staff hours and time. Is that right?
In our program summaries, we were doing it, but not real closely. We weren't watching it closely. This last year, we've had Clint watching it real close, and that's where we've got some of our new numbers from. So you will see some increases in some programs due to staffing, um, umpiring, those types of things. But as, your, to your question, I don't believe we looked at overhead and those types of things. We've just looked at the program itself with the supplies and, uh, staffing needs.
Right.
Right, so. Right, and if we were running a P and L type organization, we would consider the SGNA as part of the cost, and we would take a look at bottom line. So I think that's a Denise function where she has to kind of assess at the end of the year, you know, did revenues and expenses equal? Was one greater than the other? Are we running a deficit? Because that's what ends up being the subsidy coming from the residents. Or in other words, money that could have been used for other programs and services that the city provides. Do we know where we are with that, Denise, or is it too early to, to make that assessment? Yes.
Um, I've been working on that.
Okay. Sure. Oh, really? That fast? End of May? First of May? Okay, sounds good. Thank you. That'd be very, I mean, for me, that'll be very beneficial. Appreciate it. Okay, anything else, Dill?
I think that covers our fees.
Good?
Yeah, just shoot us a, don't call her anymore.
Uh, I'm kind of a little different. I mean, you know, we're managing a fairly large organization. I think it's important that people like Clint and those that are administering those kinds of programs are both accountable and responsible for that administration. The overall objective, of course, is to manage the funds in such a way that it's not a burn, burden to the taxpayers, right? I mean, those that are using it should be paying for those fees, and I think that's where we're headed, so it sounds good to me. I mean, I think we're headed in the right direction. Anyone else?
I agree. That's well said. I mean, I'm no fan of fees, but I like fees a lot better than taxes, and so.
In this case, it's user fees, right? It's not, uh, just a fee for a fee. It's somebody went and made use of a service, yeah.
Yeah, so I think philosophically, this is awesome, and it's, and it's really good, and we don't wanna meddle with it. I mean, we, we, we trust good management.
Like racquetball? Exactly.
Cry, cry. But, um, so I'm not afraid to...
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Well done. All right, eleven B is a discussion regarding a proposed residential development of approximately forty-six point six-three acres located at approximately twenty-two hundred north, one hundred east in the RR zone. Ken? Is that the one we have in front of us here, the salvage? Okay.
I'll try to pull it up on the screen here as well. Okay, so, uh, recently I was approached by, um, Matt Brown.
Sorry.
Speak into this.
Thank you.
Matt Brown, uh, engineering and, uh, the property, uh, some potential property developers who are here with us tonight that have looked at the Savage property, uh, on the north end of one hundred east just before it bends, uh, westward onto twenty-six hundred north. So this map, location north is going to this end. Uh, along here is the, the trail, the Murdoch Trail, uh, Murdoch Canal Trail. This is one hundred east right through here, and then it bends this way and goes on to twenty-six hundred north. So most of this property right now is vacant pasture. Uh, it's very bucolic and beautiful, and, uh, my wife has said that she doesn't want anybody to develop there, so I told her to rob a bank so that we can buy it. Uh, that didn't work, so, um, we, uh, are looking at a proposed development plan, uh, for this property. I believe the, uh, well, they're not yet applicants, but the enquirers, uh, of this property might want to address this, but I'll explain, uh, basically what, uh, the proposal is and why we're bringing this forward to you. So the Savage property includes pieces, uh, this piece right here, the triangular piece, and then this piece over here. So this piece is actually south of, or below, south and, shall we say, west of the Murdoch Canal Trail. This piece is north and east of the trail. Uh, this is a very steep-sloped property, and this has some, uh, good slopes on it as well. Uh, flattens out a little bit further as you go, but as it gets close to the trail, it's, uh, fairly steep. Uh, so these large portions of ground, uh, are difficult to develop. And this one over here, I would suppose, a better word would be impossible uh, because we don't have any road access coming up to it. It is basically a landlocked piece. You've got the trail in between. I suppose there are ways that, uh, it could be developable if it were not such a steep-sloped property. But, uh, with those two pieces in mind, uh, the, the potential owners of these properties, now, we're carving out this one in the middle because the owner of this property is currently not interested in selling. But these pieces here surrounding it, uh, are the ones that are being looked at. This is a development plan that's being proposed as to how roadways can connect and how that property could develop into the future. So the question is, is the city interested in, number one, acquiring or, uh, receiving dedication of properties such as this one over here and this one over here that has steep, uh, slopes, but that are immediately adjacent to the trail, uh, for any potential trail usage? Uh, there was a concept of a, uh, trailhead, uh, park that could be installed right here, which would be almost exactly in the middle between the Cedar Hills Trail, Trailhead Park and the eleven hundred north Trailhead Park. Uh, so a concept for that, uh, also including, uh, potentially some development lots extending the road that exists right here. And then, uh, a concept for potential Bonneville, uh, trail alignment to, or other trails that might come through at the top end of this property. So the, the question was, would the city be interested in receiving, uh, these pieces of ground uh, in exchange for, uh, the ability for the developers to have smaller lots? In other words, clustering the lots on the developable land, uh, not having an overall increase of density than what the, the zoning currently allows. And the zoning currently is RR or half-acre lots. So, uh, but the total lots would not be increased above what is allowed. They would just be pushed into the areas that are developable, causing some of the lots to be smaller. And their proposal here would be, uh, down to about fifteen thousand square foot lots or approximately a third of an acre. Uh, a lot of the lots would still comply with the zoning of being half an acre. So, uh, kind of an exchange here. So we don't currently have a mechanism in our zoning code that would allow for this clustering to occur. We have had in the past. Uh, there are a few, uh, PD zones that we have approved in the past. We took them off the books for concern that the developments were not necessarily working the way we thought they would. There was concerns on a few of them that had private roads, that the developers come back over, or the owners come back several years later and say, "Hey, we don't wanna maintain our roads anymore. Will you take our roads back?" However, we do have one PD zone, uh, in the northwest area of town, in the Northfields area. It's actually the neighborhood where Scott lives, that has a large, uh, open field, and it is maintained through a homeowners association. Uh, the streets are city streets, so we don't have that concern. Uh, it is in the RR zone, excuse me, I believe that's a R-one-twenty zone, uh, with a PD designation, which allowed them to cluster and have smaller lots in that area because of the open space. So that, that is an example of something that could be done. We would have to resurrect code that would, uh, replicate that, or we could look at it and, you know, put some other additional provisions in there that, to safeguard how we see things going down the road in the future. Uh, but, so there are options. Uh, we could also create an overlay zone that could be applied on RR zone properties, uh, that could, uh, basically accomplish the same type of a thing. So there are mechanisms we could look at, but we would have to put those in place in order to accomplish this type of development scenario. Uh, well, what we're looking at in the proposal right now is not necessarily, uh, the, uh, development plan. It is a concept plan. We have looked at it and determined that there could be some problems with their layout. So actually, the, the overall amount of lots that might be one size or another, we don't really know. But, um, basically, looking at forty-four, or was it forty-six acres, uh, total, that, uh, in the zoning, that would allow for, uh, eight ninety-two lots maximum, which, when you put in streets and such, it doesn't actually turn out to be that much. But what they, um, what they are proposing is that let us keep as, as the density as high as we can within the boundaries of that zone, uh, but, uh, just cluster them, staying away from those higher-sloped areas, which they would like to dedicate to the city. So, uh, two questions that, uh, staff would like to have direction on would be, number one, is the city interested in acquiring these pieces? Do we have use of, for them? Are they valuable to the city? The second question is, do we want to entertain clustered development or clustered zoning? Is this something that we're interested in? Is it something we're scared of? Would we, are we, uh, wanting to look at it further? So. Yeah, so, uh, the neighborhood that Scott, uh, is in was a half-acre development or half-acre zone, but the lots there are smaller. They get to about a third acre size because of the large open space that's in between. So that's probably the best example that we have currently in Pleasant Grove. There are other types of PDs, but they have been developed under different scenarios. So I think that's the best example of what might compare to this proposal.
So, uh, on our smaller papers that are in front of us, there's lot sizes on these numbers underneath here, so you can kind of get an idea for, um, how many square feet they're talking about.
Yeah, so kind of in the center here are probably where the smallest lots are, and they're about fifteen, sixteen thousand square feet. But you get, uh, some larger lots, uh, throughout the perimeter.
And then if you look up here in this corner where the tabulations are, it shows us, uh, forty-six point six acres, sixty-seven lots, one point four-four lots per acre, average lot size nineteen point nine-six. But looking at what's really being developed here, it looks more like quarter acre in that range.
Third acre.
Yeah, third, yeah, third, yeah.
So a third at minimum and a half acre at the maximum?
Or in some cases, a, a little bit more than a half acre.
So now, uh, where is eighteen hundred north on this map?
Eighteen hundred north is right, right here.
This is eighteen hundred north? This is 1,800 north? Did we just go through this same discussion with residents and development around this area about the smaller lot sizes and the larger lot sizes?
I think we were looking at a lot size averaging situation, so that's a little bit different. It's not clustering, but it's allowing the larger with a few smaller overall same density.
But the effect is you have homes on smaller lots closer together, which is kind of going to have the same effect that you have here.
Right. So, yeah, that is a point that needs to be understood, and I know our applicants are just ready to jump up and answer a couple of the questions that have been asked. But the point to consider here is that it is an RR zone. It is a half acre zone. It is a zone that allows for animal rights. It is an area that has been known to be a beautiful pasture, bucolic, rural area. This type of development will take that feel away.
So separating out the questions, I think there's two different things here. We'd have to understand what these parcels are up here, what they look like. I can't tell by looking at a two-dimensional colored map.
So what we've done is we've given a copy of this to both Dionne and Marty, and they've gone out and looked at the property. They have their recommendations in regards to how usable or how useful or valuable it might be to the city, so I can defer to that.
Have you already done that, or?
Yeah, we've looked at the slopes on the two pieces that they're looking at potentially dedicating to the city, which are this piece and this piece here. So just looking at their drawings, it looks like this is at about a 25% slope across that property, and this is much greater. So the concept of a trailhead on this piece of property is very, very difficult, very expensive to construct because you would have to deal with getting your slopes to a reasonable slope, which would be hard on that small of a piece of property. You've also got an easement that runs through the property on the Jordan, the Alpine Aqueducts that run through the property here that you can see. It also runs through a corner of that property, which would make you shift that parking lot even further back up. So on the concept of actually, you know, usable to the city, maybe not so usable because I don't think we could, we'd have a really difficult time constructing a trailhead on that piece of property. As far as open space, keeping it open, there's some value to that, aesthetic value along the trail, things of that nature, but I'm not sure of the benefit to the city of those parcels as far as usable park space, those types of things that you could actually use it for, so.
And what did you say about this one here?
That one, I believe, is even steeper on that side. I didn't see the contours on that, but it's also not accessible really to any roads as it's being proposed right now. So it's just accessible along the trail. Dionne might have something more to say with regards to the trail and that, but.
In our Phase Two of the multi-use trail system, there was a trail, a single-track trail that ran through this property, but it's so steep that.
But just through that property, right, Dionne?
Yeah, through that. It would be an advanced track, definitely. It's pretty steep up there, but, you know, like Marty says, with the aqueduct being there and the slope issues, it would be very expensive to put a parking lot in that area.
Yeah, so in relation to, or in regards to the aqueduct, you've got this 50-foot corridor going through the whole property, which is non-buildable. So any lots that would have that running through would have to create a sizable or a significant enough area for building the house outside of that corridor. So that's something that would be a layout problem or a layout situation that they would have to look at. I think that they have tried to propose something that would work with that, but we may have some concerns with that. But I think that's kind of beyond the issue tonight. That's more of a planning and making engineering things work with the development. We're just really interested, is the city interested in all in receiving these properties? And is the council interested in all in having a clustering-type zoning in this area?
Why don't we go ahead and let the applicants come up and talk a little bit about what they have in mind?
Matt Brown with MW Brown Engineering. Sad to report, but PG did lose today, so, to Riverton. Baseball, so.
He did not lose?
We lost, so.
That's okay, I mean, we can still do it.
We don't like to lose, so.
I know.
I've worked with Blake Jumper for a lot of years here, and when this come available, I talked with him about doing something here. And, you know, initially, in terms of the layout here, it may seem like it's small lots, but we're basically 100-foot frontages on all these lots that we've shown. So, yeah, we're not looking at having animal rights on this type of concept, but yet we're not looking at, you know, narrow lots, increasing a lot down so that we're not getting nice homes. You've got Hatch Estates, which is just across the street, which is sort of a, the quality and type of home that we envisioned going in, in this area. I do agree, you know, the two pieces are difficult to deal with, but good engineering likes good challenges. We would look at seeing what we could do on the one piece for a trailhead. My wife complains to me every time we go biking, that there's nothing in between those two. She likes to go to the barn and turn around. You know, this is probably about 300, 300, 400 yards further than that barn up there. That's as far as I can get her to go. So I'd like to get her further, but it won't happen. But, you know, with that, we could put, we could wrap a trail down. We've talked maybe putting some sort of dog park facilities off the trail right there. On the other piece, we thought a little bit about, you know, a mountain bike trail going up, off of it, just to give some more variety for the trail, so.
Based off what our Public Works Director and Parks and Rec Director said, that may not be possible. So do you have another plan for the use of the land if we can't do the bike?
We're just initially getting into this right now, so we're not, it's just some of the things that we've tossed around. We're looking for direction, you know. Are we, if we're not going this route, we'll probably come in and just rezone it half acre lots and go forward that way. But this actually fits the market and the needs a little bit better than a half acre lot, you know. Sometimes a lot of people, they love a half acre lot till it comes time to have to maintain it. But as long as we keep the widths on the frontages larger, not try to narrow them down, then you'll be able to get the, more of the custom, the better-looking homes that would go in there.
Council, any questions, advice for the applicant?
So as far as, as far as a trade, if you will, because usually that's kind of the spirit in which donating land to the city in conjunction with the development kind of comes in. It's like we give you land in consideration for, you know, either lot size averaging or consolidation, clustering, et cetera. It doesn't sound like this particular setup would work for that. Not to say that if you just donated the land, that's different, you know. But as far as in concession for trying to grant more density, probably not because we don't see an immediate use here for the city. It may be better for you to just come in and approach it from the perspective of what's going on around it, you know, as far as development.
And I guess here's one other question. What if we, what if we do construct the facility and donate the facility to the city in exchange? So what if we go in and figure out the engineering and develop the trailhead and put the little restroom and?
You know, I think that could be considered, but again, it would be like, before you go to spend a lot of money, you'd probably want to consult with the staff on what that value would be, and then they could help determine if there's something there to work with. But just from, from what we've heard tonight, you know, it's not, it's not something that we can really say yes to. Right? We're getting hit cold, yeah.
No, and that's, that's why it's better that we're here having this discussion. So, you know, it's tough, it's tough to make decisions, spend a lot of money and come forward with a plan and not have you guys even like it, you know. We want to be on the right path, and that's the direction. I mean, if we're totally not on, if you guys don't even like the concept, then we'll reevaluate. If there's some inkling, maybe we need to put a little bit more effort and come back and talk to you a little bit more about it.
Well, it sounds like it's worth a conversation with our Public Works and Parks and Rec Director because there might be some possible use for us after speaking with them that we could possibly use land for if it's, you know, possibly engineered in a different way. So I'd be open to, you know, them meeting up and seeing if there's a way that we can use that land before, you know, we say absolutely not, myself as a council member, I'd be open to that.
You okay with that, Matt?
Yeah.
Marty?
I would say that, I didn't say that the property is undeveloped. I just said it's very expensive to develop a trailhead or a parking lot on this steep of ground. So the concept of you constructing that at an increased cost to do that, you know, that's something I think that we could look at as far as the value being added to the trail system. You know, a trail through it, if you're bringing a trail then off the Murdoch Trail kind of in this direction and connect it so that people have an access point onto the road, you know, there's some value there. I haven't talked about a dog park before, I don't know if that's an option, but I think there's things to talk about. The other thing that I think may be valuable, and I think this is true, Ken, with regards to the zoning. Right now, it's in the RR zone, but maybe it could be rezoned to the R120. If that happens, then the concept of lot size averaging does apply to the R1 zones. So that means 25% of the lots could be down in the, I think it's about 16,000 square foot size. And so you do have, but you have to have the overall sum of the area equal to the average of 20,000 square foot, if that makes sense, the lot size averaging. So you do have an option to do that, possibly by rezoning the property. I don't think it can be done in the RR zone, but in the R1 zones, you do have lot size averaging as an option.
Does that help?
Yes, that definitely helps.
So it's not like a no? It's more like go meet with them and kind of explore that possibility a little bit more? Okay, thank you.
Mayor? If I might get just a bit of clarification, I think I hear what the council said, but I wanted to get a bit of direction in regards to clustering because I have spoken just earlier today to someone who's looking at another piece of property in the RR zone and was wondering about the ability to have clustered development. So I did let them know that we have this conversation going on tonight, but I guess I'm just wanting to feel, is this something that you might possibly be interested in? Or is this something that we should just tell?
Do you mean in the city in general, or is this like a case by case?
In general, in the RR zone.
I mean, that's kind of hard to say, right? Because we're getting hit cold. We don't have another example in front of us. Within the last eight years, PUDs have been removed from the ordinance for a lot of these reasons, and I think that we'd need to probably look at that more from an overall impact rather than just a yes or a no based on that we're being questioned about it. Thanks, Ken. Sure. Yep. Okay, does that help? Thank you.
And do you have contact information? Don't ever say we lost again. Just get out.
You know, I was pretty disappointed. I know, I was pretty disappointed with that.
Okay, you got sympathy points.
Do you have contact information and?
Yeah, I'll meet Marty on the golf course on Foxhole on Friday.
Perfect.
Oh, there you go.
I'm a clock.
Okay, item 11C is discussion on potential amendments to section 10-15-41E-6 regarding waivers of protest.
Okay, so we refer often to the verbiage waivers of protest or waiver protest when in reality what we should be saying is exemptions from the requirement of street improvements. The waiver protest comes into play in some of those exemptions and in some cases, but really, we're talking about granting an exemption from the requirement to install street improvements. So you have in your packet kind of an overview of what the discussion will revolve around tonight, but I will show on the screen here some of the questions that we have come up with, and we can discuss those, and I'll give some recommendations in regards to those. So, well, let me, before we do that, just review our current practice. So if a property owner wants an exemption from the requirement to install missing street improvements, they need to meet one of the seven listed exceptions as shown in section 10, 15, 14E on your packet, or in your packet. If they are seeking an exemption under number six, which says, and let me just read that, "Any residential property which obtains an exemption through the conditional use permit process from the Planning Commission. When the Planning Commission grants an exemption, the property owner shall sign a waiver of protest for any future special improvement district which installs all or a portion of the missing improvements." So this is where the applicant can go forward and ask the Planning Commission for an exemption, which then requires them, if it's approved, to sign a waiver of protest, which means they waive their right to protest the formation of a special improvement district, which would then require them to pay yearly assessment payments to pay for those improvements when they're installed. So they waive their right, and the reason why that's important is to establish a special improvement district or a special assessment area, you need to have at least 51% or a majority of the property owners agreeing to that. If you don't get that, then you can't establish that. That's a way to assess them a yearly payment to pay for those improvements. So those people who may have received an exemption have waived their right to protest. Their vote will not count when it comes to setting up that special improvement district area. So with that, then, once they receive this, I guess that basically covered that. So when the property is transferred, the obligation for them to have a waiver of protest or the obligation to participate in payments goes with the property. A new property owner will assume that obligation to also not be able to protest and will have to pay for those installments whenever that occurs, if that ever occurs. So the question has come up if this is an appropriate way of handling this, if that obligation should be transferred with the property, or if it should end as the property is transferred. So that's one of the questions. So I'm going to review the list of questions that we have with this, and this has been discussed, I know, previously with city council, and it has also been discussed with the Planning Commission. And we hope that after tonight, we can go back and come up with a proposed text amendment that will tighten up our code. So first question is, what is our policy or objective for installing sidewalks citywide? So when I say sidewalks, I'm talking about those missing improvements, which include the sidewalks, curb gutter, curb gutter, and any missing pavement that would bring it up to that point. So do we feel that we should have curb gutter sidewalk everywhere in the city or not? And this is kind of a driver as to how these exemptions may or may not be approved. So I'm not saying that we have to answer that question right now, but it's a question to consider. Should we exempt rural areas? Should we define areas that are not currently developed under an R1 subdivision requirement plan or plan requirements? Or, and let those areas that have been historically larger rural lots be exempt from that requirement? Or, you know, should we just plant on everybody whenever they develop? Or whenever they improve their property to a certain level to have to install those improvements? So that's the big policy question. Number two, when should an exemption with a waiver of protest be granted? So that's kind of the same question, but should we give limited circumstances? Should we, you know, absolutely define that? Number three, what criteria should be included for approval? Limited to certain zones where other improvements don't exist nearby? Where there are significant topographical challenges? You know, should these things be considered as criteria for approving a waiver or an exemption? Number four, should the obligation of waiver of protest be passed on to future property owners? So we talked about that. That's a concern. I know there are some planning commissioners who feel that, no, it should not. And so the, the difficulty that we come up with is making sure that that is taken care of at the property transfer time. How do we track that? How do we monitor? How do we, you know, enforce that that occurs? We don't always hear about when properties transfer ownership. However, i- if our recorded document on our waiver of protest requires that, then that will be found in a title search and should, should be an obligation or an, an agreement that is taken care of between the property owners when the property transfers hands. Can or should installation of prop, of improvements be required when the property is sold? So again, that's basically the same question. Could be difficult to monitor. Should a lien be placed on property approved with an exemption? It's difficult to do a lien for an undetermined amount. We don't have actual costs until the project is put in. The amount of the lien, based on the engineer's estimate, will not reflect future costs whenever the improvements are installed and we won't be able to capture the difference. So that's, that's a challenge with, with liens. Should the $30,000 threshold for additions and remodeling be reviewed or increased? So in the code, in, in this exemption area, letter C, it's talking about all missing improvements are required for additions and remodeling when additions or remodels exceed the following criteria. Number one, building additions uh, or accumulation of building additions of more than 300 square feet. And number two, remodeling valued at $30,000. So having a threshold of 300 feet, there's, okay, we know when they exceed that, then we have to add the property improvements. $30,000 is a number that was in place before I came here 10 years ago. So establishing that value as an appropriate threshold may have made sense then, but I think it's, it, it's appropriate for us to review that and determine what is the amount that it should be at today, where we cross that threshold? In that, uh, proper, building costs are more expensive now than they were 10, 15 years ago. So, but exactly how we determine the appropriate criteria for establishing that threshold? Why is it at 30,000? Why wasn't it previously at 20 or at 50? Those are questions I'm not sure there are answers to. I think we have followed the example or, or profiles of other communities. It just seems to be a good amount. But perhaps a study is important to look at the exact reasons why we come up with whatever figure we, we come up with. So I, I believe that it is time for us to review that threshold level, the dollar amount anyway, and determine what's appropriate for us today.
But can I have a question? So a kitchen remodel, say $40,000. Right? How does that trigger curb gutter and sidewalk having to be installed?
So as per the code requirements, if you do any improvements that exceed that $30,000 amount and you have missing street improvements on your property, you are then required to install those street improvements.
Why though?
Well, uh, the idea is that we have a, you want to take it?
It was something that took me a while. So in our, in our older part of town, um, the reason we have sidewalk and curb and gutter is that neither is auto surface water coming down. And it's ruining streets because it's washing away the, the, under base. So.
Grab lens real quick, right here.
So when you have, oh, good hell.
How's that? That's better. That's a lot better.
Now, what were you saying?
Does, does the camera have like a bleefer? Is there a delay please for Diana?
It actually picks all that stuff up. It's just not projecting in here, so.
Okay. Oh. It's okay, it's fine.
So when, in the old town, in the old part of town that is void of sidewalk, curb and gutter, you will notice that the streets are in worse condition. They're older, but they've also had no, the water has not been directed in a, in a path. And so when you, when, this is our opportunity, when someone is doing construction on their home, whether it be a new resident, so it's just moved in, or an old resident who's upgrading their home, this is a way for us to keep safe the stormwater system.
Okay, and I, and I completely disagree because, and I'm not saying, it's just the policy. It doesn't make sense that someone who wants to carpet, paint, redo a kitchen, has to now install 10 to 20,000 dollars of curb gutter and sidewalk. I don't, like, the, it doesn't, it doesn't even make sense. I don't know. That, but is this, is this done like nationwide? Is this just in our city? I'm trying to understand kind of how it came about. I just, it's like they're being penalized or punished for wanting to remodel their home and that's a lot of money for people. So I'm wondering, I guess, the history behind or how it came, like you said, the 30,000, we don't know. But I, it just not, I mean, I understand the need for curb gutter and sidewalk, but the trigger, it just doesn't make sense.
I, I'm guessing that's exactly what happened is the city said, we need curb gutter sidewalk in our city. How are we going to make that happen? So here's one trigger point. Does it actually match up and it makes sense? Maybe it doesn't. But it was a way to try to get it put in front of people's homes. So that's why we want to have the policy question. The council says, look, the dollar thing doesn't make sense, then it goes away. If the square footage thing makes sense, then let's keep that in there. If the council's like, you know, I'm not worried about curb gutter sidewalk in our city, then.
Well, I'm, I'm really concerned about it. I mean, it's a safety issue in the city and that's our first priority and concern. I'm just, I'm not, I'm just wondering how this is fair to the resident or I, that's what I'm having, I guess, questions about.
It might help to understand that those street improvements are the property owner's responsibility. When you build a new home, they're included in the class of construction. And so what this is intended to do is to provide a way for people who built before that was a requirement to still be responsible for the street improvements. And they don't have to put them in today, but if they're going to do any major improvements, the idea is, is if you're going to go get a second mortgage to remodel your kitchen to add on another $10,000 or whatever it is for your curb gutter and sidewalk, it's probably not that much. I'm probably overestimating, but.
I think it is that much in some cases.
Well, it's the time when you have the ability to, to get the money to get it done. The other tool that we use, and we haven't used it in a long time, is the special assessment area now, where if you wanted to, you could go into a neighborhood and ask them all if they wanted to put curb gut, curb gutter and sidewalk in and, and establish that area and then have them all pay a monthly cost of that, dividing it out. So this is just intended to be one tool to accomplish the bigger goal of getting curb gutter and sidewalk everywhere in the city eventually.
Another thing that's coming up is as we go through and we are starting to redo our streets. So for example, on Locust, you know, giving the, the residents an opportunity at that point to say a special service district.
So, so I'm kind of thinking new development could trigger. I know like on Loader, we have the new development going in. So there's going to be a brand new sidewalk. There's going to be a piece of missing sidewalk in front of an older home and then there's going to be sidewalk again. So to me, that, that could be a trigger. It possibly, um, the, the special improvement district, as you said, I don't know. I just think maybe we need to look at some other options besides. It just, I don't know.
I'm hearing what, what Sid is saying here and I'm kind of in agreement with her. This concept of the, the trigger
Right.
seems to have no relationship to a sidewalk, a curb gutter and sidewalk. You know, kitchen remodel, curb gutter sidewalk. You don't, there's no relationship between them other than you're getting a loan or not. So now's a good time. Get some more money and pay for it. But, you know, normally these things have evolved where nobody starts off with curb gutter and sidewalk when a, when a town first goes in. And then eventually as density becomes increased and people leave the rural kind of a field, they start moving into a more suburban, urban kind of a, a setting with kids and schools. Then, then their values change. Just like sewer, just like water, indoor plumbing. You move the outhouse into the in-house and it becomes a bathroom. You're not cooking outside on a fire. Well, we're kind of at that point as a city. We're growing from maybe the center of town out to where it hasn't been developed yet. The triggers though, I think this is the area where we need to kind of focus on. The triggers all, have always seemed a little strange to me because you can have one home that does something. They put the curb gutter and sidewalk in and that is the only curb gutter and sidewalk that sits there forever. And by the time the rest of the development comes along, it's not even in the right place, the right height. You know, it was, it was met. It seems like we need a different kind of a, an effort or a campaign and a focus to go in street by street, neighborhood by neighborhood and march through the city. Hopefully better than we did secondary water, you know, and kind of roll out this curb gutter and sidewalk thing throughout the city. But the responsibility to pay for it, everybody that has it paid for it with their home. We have examples now of, of people that did not pay for sewer at a time when it was X, cost X, and now it's 100X. And 100X is completely unacceptable when it could have been done for X. So we kind of have to reassess as a, as a community. You know, if this is where we're headed, then the community has to agree that we need to, we need to kind of progress and, and move in that direction.
Mayor, one point is, um, and I agree with this. What, maybe when the $30,000 thing was designated, maybe $30,000 was, that was a rebuild, you know, that was an addition. 30,000 was probably not a kitchen remodel with paint and.
Would have been a whole house when I was a kid.
Right. And so I'm wondering if it was digging, if you're going to dig on your property, new foundations, new footings, that kind of thing. So I wonder if the, the dollar amount at that point was just the significance of a dig.
I, I think I'd be more in favor of maybe the council, the staff, the planning commission looking at, is this something that we're really serious about? And if it is, the economies of scale are going to be in our favor to kind of band together as a community and knock out entire blocks at a time for the least possible price. That's where you're going to get the benefit. And then the whole thing gets done. It gets done evenly, it's complete. The road is preserved because you've got support on both sides of the asphalt to keep it together. And there's a lot of benefits here that could, that could take place.
I, I agree with that concept because what, what you end up with currently is we're waiting for that trigger to occur before we have a property that gets that improvement. But even with that, they might receive an exemption. So you're getting a lot of mishmash or zigzag in some proper, in some neighborhoods where it just doesn't make sense. And so I think really, uh, either we totally review and revise the trigger points for how we operate these exemptions, or we just trash the whole thing and we look at establishing special improvement districts and, and go at it that way. And I think that, that is a policy shift, but I think it's a worthy discussion.
Do we know what other communities are doing to install their curb gutter and sidewalk?
Well, they, they have done both. I know a lot of cities have done special improvement districts. I know St. George, when I was growing up down there, they had done a lot of their streets through special improvement districts. But then there are cities that operate with this type of a trigger situation as well. I'm not sure with where we're at currently with the amount of roadways that are lacking street improvements that we're ever really going to achieve our objective of having full streets. I think really the only way to do it is through special improvement districts.
I, I guess I, I think what I'm saying is I don't think that what we're trying to tie together here works. This isn't, not the right place to be doing this. There needs to be some other mechanism for achieving curb gutter and sidewalk throughout the city other than a one-off every 10 years when someone decides to do a remodel to their kitchen.
Well, but just, just to be clear, the exemptions for, are there, I mean, there's a general requirement when you're doing any construction, you have to put in the curb gutter and sidewalk. Then section E gives certain times when you don't have to worry about that. This that we're talking about is only one subsection of that. So, I mean, we can do away with that subsection, but we wouldn't want to do away with the, the other exemptions.
So we don't have that whole thing and we're not reviewing it right tonight. We're just kind of giving you feedback generally. Like there's a project at the top of Main Street right now. Guarantee there's going to be curb gutter and sidewalk around the whole thing. I mean, it's like, it's not even a question. That's just what a developer does when they put in a new development. 10 homes, 15 homes, it's just, they, they do it. We're not, we're not actually able to just open it up for comment. I'm sorry.
Can I say one thing? I, I mean, I think there is definitely value. Is this working at all?
No.
No? Okay, I'll talk really loud, but. Don't need it that close for that one. Good. That is a nice one. So we are, you know, the concept of improving streets, be able to maintain a little bit more of a, you know, your pavement sections are going to be better if we can be able to get that stormwater directly into curb and gutter, directly into the storm drain systems. I, I fully agree that the way it's been done, that I've been involved with for the last, you know, 12 years or so, and I know it was done before that, that we've been doing the same process. There is a value to having that waiver of protest. I'm not sure in some instances that the curb and gutter in the middle of a block that has no curb and gutter for three blocks each direction makes sense. But there are instances when we're next to an existing curb and gutter that somebody is building a new home. Maybe there's an improvement project that's a, a huge addition to the property that it would make sense to get those improvements installed. And, and so I would say in those instances, as we, as we consider that, that we still leave those things there because it does make sense in some instances. It's not all together. It doesn't make sense at all. But I would say that we also need to have that waiver of protest there because when you go into a special assessment area, uh, you have to get a 60% vote of those people in that area in order to approve the special assessment area. And if those that have done large enough improvements but chose not to install those improvements are required as a yes in that vote, then the more likelihood is that we could actually get some curb and gutters done in these areas. And so I guess as we move forward, some of tho, those are some of my thoughts on that, so.
I'm inclined to agree, Mayor, with both Marty and Tina. I mean, I think there's a lot of, this approach does work. It works in communities. If you're not granting exception, exemptions all the time, it does work to get sidewalk built eventually. Yeah, I mean, you make a legitimate point about the mishmash as it's done over time, but there's value in a triggering event. And it happens that way and it, and the most important trigger for this kind of discussion is when do they have the money? If you base it on when neighbors build, it may be that this person that's now obligated to put their sidewalk in doesn't have the resources to do it. The most important question and the analysis is do they have the resources to put the sidewalk in at the time that needs to be put in? So I think this system can work, but I think there's also a lot of wisdom in approaching some special improvement areas where it's going to make sense, where we've got large areas, a number of areas that have done a number of exemptions in the past and it's time to just get it all done and talk to them and see if we got the 60%. So I think there's value in this system. I don't want to undercut the, the wisdom of the triggering as it's been implemented in the past, but I think there's also some, some insight and some value. But I think there's also some, some insight and some value in the way we're discussing doing it going forward. I think there's an approach there that can be very effective for our city to get areas where we, especially in school routes, areas where we know there's a tremendous need for sidewalks, not just for the directing of water, but also for other foot traffic safety issues. I'm comfortable with, with having this system in place, reviewing this $30,000 threshold, getting a lot more restrictive on how freely we grant exemptions. I mean, that's the, really the core of the problem, is it's hard to tell somebody when they've, when they're right in front of you, no, you've got to do it right now. Um, and so reevaluate this, bring it up to modern, you know, today's dollars. So maybe it's 50, maybe it's 80,000, maybe it's a much larger number. Keep this system in place, but at the same time, roll out some special improvement areas, I think is a, is a solution that would work for our city.
And Ken, there are, there are, there are some places in town that, and I'm remembering a waiver that we granted, where, uh, I think it might have been a PUD, and I remember it was in the north part of town, and none of the houses had sidewalk curb and gutter. I don't know if you remember this one.
Yeah, well, there's, there's been a few of them recently that have been that way.
And so there are some areas that the residents chose specifically not to have sidewalk curb and gutter, but I think they also, uh, it was a planned unit development.
I think the developer chose that to save money.
Oh.
The residents didn't necessarily choose that. So, so, you know, I mean, we've had a good discussion. You kind of have a cross, uh, smattering of what thoughts are. All you asked for, right?
Yeah. So I, I think what I'm getting from this is, uh, I, I don't know, I guess as far as the establishment of special improvement districts, that's going to be on an, a higher level, uh, you know, however we approach that. But as far as the code for granting exemptions, I think we can come up with some verbiage that will tighten up some criteria as to how we grant them and what the triggering level is. And that's something that we can work with and, and bring back to you.
And maybe even some more triggers.
I was going to say possibly reviewing some additional triggers that are a creative way of...
Yeah, we'll, we'll put some language together for you to act on, so that...
Wonderful.
Yeah, well, so me, Ken, and Tina will work on that one.
Right.
And Marty, probably. He has time.
Next.
Make a formal request for more water down at the center of the table. Thanks, Kathy.
Anything else, Ken?
Not on this item.
Did we beat that one to death?
Not to death.
Okay. All right. What else did you have?
I don't know if there's anything we can do.
So Mayor, that next item is actually something we need to put, uh, to, uh, move indefinitely.
The discussion on questions in the general plan survey?
Yeah, so if, if I can report a little bit on where we're at with that. We did have a discussion with the planning commission this last Thursday in regards to survey questions. We looked at, uh, the 2011 survey format, which is attached to your, uh, packet. Um, and we kind of briefly went through those questions, found that a lot of them perhaps are no longer good questions to ask, but that's kind of a starting point that we use to find out what are appropriate questions? What are the things that we need to know from our community in order to move forward with the general plan update? So we're still, I think we're going to go back to the planning commission with this review, come up with some new question possibilities, then we'll end up coming back to you for this. But in the meantime, if you feel like you just don't have anything better to do, um, please look through this survey that's we sent out in 2011, and give me your comments on that. Or, you know, maybe it'll trigger for you some additional questions that you think should be asked.
What was your return rate on these?
Um, I'll have to go back and look at that. I think we were around...
About 1,200.
Yeah, I think it was about 13% overall, that, uh, if, if I'm right. I'm, I'm going to have to look that up. I don't know if I can remember correctly, but, um, what, what you look at as an average, at least what I've seen, and I've, uh, read for a national return rate, 3% to 5% for a survey is considered normal. But, uh, we did implement the, uh, the, uh, putting the carrot in front of them, in other words, trying to get them to return and then put their name in a drawing for, uh, $100 off of their, uh, utility billing. And that tends to get people to submit more when they know there's a drawing or something. So, so I think we should continue to use something like that. But I would also recommend that, um, as long as we're talking about this, um, that the, uh, the paper format is very challenging, uh, especially when we're trying to mesh results from online to paper. The only way that we can have a scientific, uh, comparison or analysis of those results is to, for us as staff, enter each one of those results manually here in the office. And we did that last time. We ended up doing 900 or so surveys, and it took us quite a long time to do that. And I know that there's a perceived value of having those people who perhaps don't want to or don't know how to get online and do it. Um, I think perhaps the population that fall in that category is dwindling. Um, I know there's perhaps still those, but I'm wondering if, rather than sending out paper copies with the newsletter so that everybody gets one, that we let them know in the newsletter that if they would like to receive a paper copy, please call or whatever, and we will mail one to you.
Or we can make them available at a different city.
Or make them available at places where they can pick them up. Then I think the amount of paper copies that we're going to get returned are going to be substantially reduced. It'll make our, uh, ability to analyze and put the results together a lot simpler.
Could, could we offer, maybe they can come to the library and fill it out online?
Yeah, we can have, or come to community development, and we'll help you enter your results right here.
Or maybe at the senior center?
Yeah, we can do multiple locations.
Maybe at the, at the recreation center?
Yeah.
Okay.
Certain businesses have a lot of flow of traffic.
Yeah, some businesses have a lot of flow of traffic. They can, the city's certainly welcome to set up kiosks there that are electronic.
Yeah. Do we, are we equipped to be able to track email addresses, make sure that it's not, that someone isn't...
Well, the, uh, the functions, uh, so there's Survey Monkey, there's Qualtrics, uh, that use, different, uh, programs that will let you set up the surveys. Um, they only allow one entry from that email address. So if you try to go back on and redo the survey, it won't let you.
We match it to utility billing?
Great idea.
So that it's unique?
Yeah, we could...
Well, we'll have to look at options. It, it, there's probably not a foolproof way, but there, we'll do our best to tighten that up to make sure the...
Thank you. Okay, good discussions. So, uh, if I understand you, then item E is going to be, did I say that right? Item D is going to be just moved into the future?
Yeah, we'll bring it back. Uh, planning commission needs to review it again, and then we'll bring it back to you.
All right. Thanks, Ken. Okay, we are at section 12, discussion on the May 3rd, uh, city council meeting agenda. We have certificates for the Leadership Academy. Uh, we have a presentation and discussion on public safety impact fees.
So Mayor, just to clarify that, that's going to be more of a Q and A for the city council. When we had our meeting last week, it was requested that, um, we look into updating our fee, uh, updating our, uh, study. And, uh, Louis Young is the expert at that. We tried to get him here tonight, but, uh, Cody's out of town, so he'll be here on the 3rd. So we have it listed as a presentation, but it will be an opportunity for council to ask questions.
Great. Will it be also for the public to be able to ask questions?
Well, I, I don't know. I guess that's up to you on how you want to set that up.
Well, I think it's a question for the council.
Yeah.
I mean, I've been involved in multiple one-on-one meetings, answering questions about, or should I say, trying to answer questions about, uh, impact fees that frankly, I don't, I'm not an expert in the field.
Yep. That's why we bring these guys in, right?
I would propose that we allow the public to comment and ask questions.
Maybe we could get written questions, and then it's a more of a, um, organized, and Cody can have those, and then he can kind of go through them.
That'd be great. Whatever format you want to, to do that, uh, we can accommodate that.
All right.
Well, and maybe we can get those to Cody before the, you know, if people have questions, they could actually...
They can email them to me and I can...
They can email council members and, they can email us as council members, right?
Can we also, uh, something like this on the website, so people can submit, uh, questions ahead of time, and then we can collect them and get them to Cody? Is there a way to do that?
Yeah, I...
You don't know how?
I think most of the people in this room are the ones that are going to ask the questions. I don't know if we have a general citizenry out there that is, has burning questions.
Well, you never know.
You're right.
You're encouraging input.
Yes, we can accommodate that, Mayor.
They feel comfortable emailing the questions to Scott?
They can email them to Ben. I think they'd feel comfortable that way.
Or anyone, anyone. I'll take questions.
Yeah, be great.
As long as we can gather them, I think we'll start to see patterns and Cody can answer them ahead of time.
Yeah, that would help Cody.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Everyone is as comfortable talking to me, I think. That's fine.
Uh, section nine is public hearing items. Um, consider adopting ordinance 2016-8 rezone approximately 3.4 acres from R-120 to R-112, um, at approximately 1040 East Grove Creek Drive. Oh, this is up at Sam Walker.
All right, so what's shown on the screen is the area that's being proposed for rezon. You've got, uh, an R-19, uh, zoned area to the south, you've got R-112 across the street to the north. That entire area is, uh, is master or general plan for, uh, media, or low-density residential development, which allows for the R-112 zone or the R-115 zone. So the request is to rezon this to R-112 so that they can, uh, develop the property into a plan which is further on the agenda with six lots. Now, a few of those lots, uh, would still be able to meet the R-120 zone, but some of them would be down to, uh, 13,000 something, uh, square feet. So it, it does meet the general plan designated zoning of the area. This is some holdout, uh, R-120 zoned areas that, uh, were put into place so...
So it's already surrounded by R-110 and R-112?
And R-120.
Yeah, a couple of holdouts on R-120. Okay. Any questions?
We've got that properly noticed, I assume. Noticing, noticing for rezon is all been taken care of, I assume.
Yes.
Okay, and then we have a public hearing to consider request by Kevin Peterson for a city code text amendment to section 101515 flag lots, amending the purpose and ability for the approval of flag lot developments.
All right, so, hey, excuse me, uh, reported on our, uh, discussion that we had at, uh, planning commission this last week, and we, I sent to you and briefly that the planning commission had a rather thorough review of this section. At the same time, Kevin Peterson has had an application placed to amend our ordinance. So we kind of attacked it, double-barreled. The, the first is just a discussion on the, the entire ordinance or that code section itself. And then when the, uh, planning commission was done with that review, we kind of focused in on what Kevin's proposal was. So, uh, their discussion came up with, uh, some good ideas of how we can amend the ordinance and, uh, kind of meshed it with Kevin's proposal. It's coming back to the planning commission on the 28th for further review. If at that time they're ready to forward a recommendation, then this will be on your agenda on the 3rd.
Okay. Questions? Okay, C is a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed Pleasant Grove City fiscal year 26, uh, 2016, 2017 budget. And the tentative budget includes the fee schedule and the RDA budget.
So, well, yeah, generally speaking, uh, when it comes to adoption of our tentative budget, it's, there's not a public hearing required with it. When we went over, uh, last week, a lot of our fee, um, schedule in, potential increases, um, the city council requested that we give the, uh, opportunity for our public to respond to that.
Okay.
So when we do this, we will have, um, we will go over everything we recapped last week and some of the things we talked about today with the recreation fees, and, uh, we'll recap all that with the city council, make sure everybody's on the same page. And then I think the idea would be to open it up to the public to let them comment on some of these proposals. So this will be road fee, uh, utility fees, um, cemetery fees, and then our parks and rec fees.
Okay.
As well as really anything on the budget. Uh, we'll also talk about, um, our budget reduction and freeing up some money for, uh, road maintenance that the city council instructed that we use all of that for, uh, road maintenance. We'll talk about that as well, if the public has any comment on that.
Okay.
Um, so that's the intent, and then, you know, item 11, or 10A is to adopt our tentative budget, so.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, so, forgive me if this is not making sense, but if we're adopting the tentative budget and includes the road fee, and the last time we talked as a council about road fees, we talked about multiple scenarios, is there a specific one in the tentative budget, or is the tentative budget multiple scenarios?
The tentative budget will not have anything put into it until the council says. So the tentative budget, we're required by law to adopt, but we can still change that up until we adopt our final budget.
Yeah, so we'll give instruction as to what that tentative budget will be on May 3rd after the public...
The tentative budget will already be set up without any of the fees in it.
Okay.
And then once, if, once the city council pulls trigger on specific fees, then we'll roll that into the, um, final budget. And we'll have, sorry...
When's final adoption?
The 3rd.
The 3rd Tuesday.
3rd Tuesday, June. And we'll have a...
Yep, three weeks or so.
21st of June.
Well, we'll have, we'll have probably about six weeks, I think, uh, in that meantime. Uh, and there will be another public hearing. I mean, we're required to do a public hearing before we adopt our final budget. That will be the first Tuesday in June. Um, so what we're looking for next week is really some final, when I say final, some final proposals from the council on where you're at on these fees, so that we can start rolling that into the, the final budget, so that we can advertise that, uh, to the public what the fee increases are, so that they can attend our public hearing, that first meeting in June. We, I think we want to have that all decided before that first meeting in June, um, so that we can get that out to the public. That's, that would be the intent.
Any other comments? All right, 10B, to consider for approval of three lot, uh, final plat called Forest Phillips Development. Plat A consisting of approximately 0.47 acres on property located at approximately 10 South 400 East.
So, simple three lot plat is shown on the screen.
It's, uh...
Yeah, there's lots of fun stuff with the...
Well, there's some engineering issues that, uh, have followed the, uh, the irrigation canal that comes through the southern portion of the property. But as far as dividing the property up into three lots, uh, that meets the zoning criteria.
This, uh, is this across from Central?
Central.
Like to the south of Central? Okay.
Eight in the third lot?
All right, about the existing irrigation diversion. Um, it's sitting about right here, Diana. So no.
Okay.
There's actually a boundary line adjustment between this property owner and this property owner to create what you're seeing here. And, uh, and they've got to address a box that sits right there. It's actually out in the road a little bit too, so this, it does create some concerns. But they've got a proposed plan to try to address it. They haven't provided us enough detail.
Sidewalk curb and gutter?
That's, we've already got sidewalk and curb and gutter to here.
Right.
Because of the thing that we just talked about, he was required to put it in front of his house.
Right.
Now, when this is developing, we should be able to get it to connect all the way through.
And we have a real serious elevation change up to that corner.
Yeah, there is some grade there, but...
The sidewalk on that corner is, it's about three feet higher than the...
That'll be addressed over at least 10 minutes.
My kids don't go to school anymore. They just, how will, no.
Not your problem?
Dang.
Okay, anything else on that one? All right, item C, to consider for approval of one lot final plat. I'm going to get this wrong. Jipeng Estates? Jipeng, on property located at approximately 600 South Apple Grove Lane?
Yes, so this is a one lot subdivision. Uh, the property to the north and east, uh, normally would have been required to join the subdivision for the creation of this lot. However, uh, there was, uh, disagreement in how they would do that, so, uh, Mr. Jipeng went to the Board of Adjustment to, uh, get a variance from the requirement to include neighboring properties. Uh, so he has been cleared to be able to create a one lot plat. So that's what the council come forward. So that's what goes to come forward. Preliminary plat has been approved by the Planning Commission.
Questions? Item D, consider for approval, a six-lot final plat called Walker Grove Plat A, consisting of approximately 3.317 acres on property located at approximately 1040 East Grove Creek Drive. Did we just discuss this?
Right, so that was the rezone that we were talking about, which needs to occur before we can approve a plat.
So it'll be discussed and then later in the agenda, the actual plat will be discussed. Okay? Item E, to consider for reapproval of a two-lot final plat called Canyon Brook Plat B, located at approximately 2879 North Canyon Road.
Well, the council will probably remember that this property has come before us a few times in the past. It was ultimately approved after variance was granted on this property in 2014. And this plat actually did come forward for your approval and was approved in 2014. However, it was not recorded and the approval has expired. So we're bringing it forward again for reapproval.
Any questions? Okay, item F, to consider for approval, a final plat called 1,000 South Street Dedication Plat, consisting of approximately 0.93 acres located at 1,000 South and Locust Avenue. I told David to fix the microphones. He went a little above and beyond. Thank you, David. We're all waiting.
It's a Matrix moment.
Okay, so this property below the street dedication of 1,000 South is actually in Linden. And Linden has approved a plat for these properties here. We have recently approved Huckleberry Estates. Is it Huckleberry or Honey Suckle? I always get those.
Honey Suckle Plat A.
On the corner of Locust Avenue and 1,000. So, but now between these two developments, there needs to be a roadway. So this is a dedication of this roadway of 1,000 South, which currently does not exist. This will start the construction part of 1,000 South Street.
That didn't take long. I mean, that was the discussion about the roundabout?
Right.
This is good.
Now we find out if a four-way is not sufficient.
Yes, immediately.
Immediately.
Okay, any questions? Okay, item G, to consider for adoption, a resolution 2016-016 indicating the intent of Pleasant Grove City to adjust the common boundary with the city of Cedar Hills applicants Gina and Scott Day, Brent and Neva Wilson, Gordon and Karen Davies, and Christopher and Sarah Eager. Tina?
The councils several months ago indicated to Ms. Day that they would be amenable to entertaining their request to boundary adjust. These homes are on Ninth West. Sewer was an issue, the main issue. At that time, they were instructed to submit a plat. It's taken them many months to do so, but they finally have submitted an engineer plat. So this will be the first step in the boundary adjustment. You'll just be adopting a resolution declaring your intent to adjust the boundary. Then there's a certain amount of time left open for public comment and that type of thing. Then you'll hold a public hearing at which time you'll adopt the ordinance actually adjusting the boundaries.
This one's initiated by the right of property owners. So there's no, there's no voting as far as the number of people. All right, any questions on that one?
Yeah, just as a matter of curiosity. My understanding is that they have access to Cedar Hills services. They're not in any way being held up by us, right, for the essential services they need?
No, the people who needed to hook on have already hooked on to the Cedar Hills sewer that Gina Day has. The rest of them, I'm not sure of.
I don't think the rest have. I think they're just making sure that if their centrics go out, they have an option two. But I think Gina's the only one that's actually hooked on. The Wilsons might have too, but Gina for sure.
All right. Are the homes contiguous, properties?
So the one home is, I don't know if you remember, but up on the corner of Ninth West and Cedar Hills Drive. Several years ago, we allowed that parcel to be adjusted out. It was Eric Johnson's.
The attorney?
Yep.
The one parcel's right next to him. And then Gina Day and her neighbors are a little bit farther south on the other side of the street. But as far as I can tell, there's contiguousness.
All right, item H, to consider for awarding a bid for Locust Ave Construction.
It's currently out to bid for Locust Ave Construction. Bid should be received next Thursday, I believe. We'll make a recommendation for award of that bid. The planned construction timeframe is to start that mid-May. Be completed by mid-August before school starts. So Locust Ave from Second South to Fifth South, plus Third South from First East to the swimming pool is kind of the project area that we're looking at that's been bid, so.
How likely is it that it will finish before school starts?
That is all in the contract, so pretty likely. I think we can get it done with what we're proposing, the way we're planning to do it. We should be able to get it done. There's not a lot of underground improvements. We have a small section of waterline replacement with it. The waterline, if you remember, in Locust Ave was completed a couple of years ago. So that'll tend to help it go a lot faster because we're really dealing with the asphalt and base, not with full utility improvements underneath it, so.
Sidewalk, curb, and gutter on the west side of the way?
No, there will be from Third South to Second South with what's being proposed to be completed at this time. So right now, there's a small section between Second South and Third South that's missing. So that will be constructed. And a small section on Third South will also be constructed. But there's some missing sidewalk down towards Fifth South that is not planned to be constructed with this project. So yes, where the big trees are there on Second and Locust. On the west side, those trees will be removed and the ADA ramp constructed with curb, gutter, and sidewalk is the current plan.
Thank you.
Glad to get the road projects going through season.
And they'll take a break during Strawberry Days that week?
Yes, we've indicated that there will be no work performed during that week and they'll have to clean up the area for Strawberry Days activities.
I think we should.
Okay, we're back to tonight's agenda. Neighborhood and staff business. Anything, Libby? Nothing tonight? Okay. Ken?
Nothing more. I just did send an update today, perhaps most of you haven't seen that yet. Our planner did start. It was an interesting story with that. So I'll let you just read that on the email, but can we have him started now? We've also got the Thrive Nursery and Garden Development, which is Ken Brett Schneider's development. We've got a site plan in on that.
Great. Thank you. David?
Nothing for me.
John?
Nothing.
Barney?
There's quite a lot going on right now. Center Street Project's still going well. Looks like, hoping tomorrow we get the actual permit from UPR to bore underneath the railroad tracks and finish that project again. It's still 1st of June. We had our one staff level engineer start yesterday. Mario started. And he's been, it's been great to work with him for a couple of days. And we have an intern starting on Thursday from BYU. Another intern starting next Monday. And they will help us, we've been using interns for the last couple of summers to help us really get our GPS maps, go out and map our systems and try to get a handle on what we've got infrastructure-wise. So it's a great resource for us to do that. We'll continue that this summer. And then our second staff level engineer will start next Monday. So we'll have four new starting down there in Public Works and we'll be very busy training for the next while.
Great.
So the Blue Energy Project, the turbine company arrived, I think, today. They're getting there to kind of get that started up and getting all of the electrical, all the computers, all of that stuff going. They expect it to be about a week on getting that set up. We have a little tour that's happening with the American Society of Civil Engineers on Thursday. And it should be exciting at some point. Once they get that going, everything's operational tied in, then we'll, you know, we should talk further about A ribbon cutting for that project and discuss it further, so.
Earth Day?
Earth Day is the 22nd.
Of May?
Of, I believe it's...
April, it's this month, yeah. My anniversary's Earth Day. 22nd of April, yeah. Yeah.
So is there a possibility to do anything in conjunction with Earth Day?
So because they really don't have it up and going and their plan, as soon as they could get here, was expected to be on Thursday with the day before Earth Day, there was no way to really work that into their schedule. If it was another week later or even a couple of weeks later, we probably could have done it there.
Okay, no problem.
Too tough to work something in with their schedules.
Anything else? David?
RFPs went out for the fireworks display for this 4th of July. It came back as singular, not plural. I guess there's just one company that likes us. And Lantus is going to be providing our fireworks display this year because we have to change the venue and we had to change up the setup. And so it should be really a fun one this year. And should be completely aerial. We don't have a lot of ground activity. It should be all on the sky. So there's a venue for blocks, you know, several blocks around. Should be able to see it. And then on Saturday, we had our, we held our kickoff for the free carbon dioxide detector giveaway for our citizens. It was secondary to a grant that came in through Firehouse Subs. We met over at Firehouse Subs in American Fork. And the point of bragging, American Fork did theirs. They had the same kind of thing on a couple of weeks ago. They gave away around 30 of them to their citizens. We had over 50 that we handed out to our citizens and stuff on that day. So they're open, they're available to our citizens. They're free of charge. They just need to stop by the, stop by the fire station. We would like them to bring a, like a utility bill or something just to show us that they're, that they're our citizens. But even if they don't, we're probably not going to question it because we'd really like to get these installed in the houses. And they are not restricted to just one. We'd like to get as many as we need to in order to cover the stinking areas so that those alarms can work and keep our people safe. That will go until they're gone. We had, we have about 240 of them, at least we had that many. So about almost 200 of them.
Did I miss open burn? Was that done?
Still going on till May 30.
Still going on until, still going on till the end of May.
And then did we do city cleanup?
I was going to just break back in. So city cleanup starts Saturday, goes for a week. It is open on Sunday, the 24th as well. 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, it will be open. We'll have people that, we'll have Public Works employees there telling people where to dump, where to put stuff. And there is a list. We did put a slider on the webpage that they can go to and select that and get more specific information. The information that went out in the newsletter is duplicated on the city webpage so they can look at what things are acceptable or not.
Tires you burn at home?
Until May 30.
Dave, anything else?
Over a hot dog.
Just, just one thing. Earthquakes are happening around the world. We still have our Build a 96-Hour Kit going. Just visit the webpage, the city webpage, under the Fire or Police tabs, and build a kit with us. We're, I think, at number seven. So let's get you guys prepared so that you lighten our load when it happens. And then you'll be prepared to help others.
Anything else? Mike?
Nothing.
Nothing? Sheri back?
No.
Scott?
Nothing.
Just to announce that we have hired a full-time prosecutor and that person will be beginning work on May 1st.
Okay, good deal, Jesus.
Well, may say so.
Sheri, just in time, did you have anything you wanted to bring up?
The computers still aren't back up in the library. Well, they have a really successful program going on there right now.
What is it?
Could repair me.
Wow. Mine's not even turned on. It's called Day of the Child. And originally, it was intended to be more of the Spanish program for Spanish-speaking patrons, but they turned it into a broader festivity. And they have puppeteer and people doing face painting and balloons. And it's going really well. And our self, new self-checkouts are mostly going really well except for right now. So, yeah, things are going good. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy? Damon?
Just very, very grateful for everybody that works. I've just been very aware of the services that we have. I am grateful for public safety. I'm always just very amazed at what they do, that people just don't, regular people in town just don't know.
I see we're the third safest city in the county.
County, what was?
Congratulations.
And safest in the what, nation or something? I'm just, I'm just priming that one. Sounds good.
I'm sure there are some articles.
Safest in the northern hemisphere. Yeah, I had a couple of things. I had a question for Tina. She was talking about the full-time prosecutor. Given that they're a full-time position, will we get to meet them? Will they come to?
Yes, we're planning on having several of the new employees come at once. And so May 3rd is when...
Probably our next meeting.
So you'll, you'll get to meet that person.
Awesome. I had a resident ask me to announce, there's a spring fine art show that the county is putting on. The sponsors are Utah County Commissioners. So one of the sponsors, I guess, is a Pleasant Grove resident. This is April 30th to May 28th at the Utah County Art Gallery, which is down in Provo. But I think it features some Pleasant Grove artists and certainly has a Pleasant Grove sponsor. I know there's at least one Pleasant Grove resident on the board there. So I was asked to announce that. If you could send that down to Kathy, she can put it in the minutes or whatever. And then next week, on today's date, we're doing a town hall meeting panel discussion with presidents of service clubs, the Rotary Club, the Kiwanis Club, Lions Club. We actually recently had a request include the former Grand Master of the Lodge of the Odd Fellows, that's a local lodge. So it should be a really great discussion. So feel, I hope everybody feels invited to that. Would be great to have a lot of people coming here from service clubs. We'll do it here in the council chambers from 7:00 to 8:00 PM a week from today.
The 26th?
The 26th. We don't have a council meeting that night. So it should be a fun event. And I think that's all I have today.
Oh, yeah, and PG Players is this weekend.
Yeah, and Center Stage starts in a week. No, PG Players is 12 Angry Men. Center Stage starts in a week from Saturday with Peter Pan.
All right, calendaring tomorrow night. We have the Public Safety Building Committee meeting as well as the city council to be invited to that. And that would include our chiefs and our judge. For those, and Denise, those that have been attending that, okay? It shouldn't be a very long meeting, but it'll be a good and important one. Thank you for covering while I've been gone. I am leaving again on Saturday and I'll be back in country on the 5th. Okay. All right, do we have any plats to sign tonight? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to go into a closed meeting to discuss the sale of real property and to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation.
And I'll make the motion that we go into an executive session, closed meeting, to discuss the sale, lease, or purchase of real property and to discuss reasonably imminent litigation.
Motion by Ben, second by Lynn. All in favor? Aye. Any call. Okay, and then we'll bring out if anybody wants to hang around. If there's any kind of discussion or anything, you're welcome to.